Tuesday, September 19th. Our first item is Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Turn your chair the other way.
And then our next item is approval of the agenda. We had two things to add under consent. So it would be G would be to authorize the city administrator to execute documents associated with the Sargent's Union certification. And H, award contract to Millboro Electric for Kruger and Sixtieth Street light repair.
I move approval as agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Motion carries. Our next item is the oath of office for council member Mark Swenson.
I, Mark Swenson.
I, Mark Swenson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
Of the state of Minnesota.
And I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council member in the city of Oak Park Heights.
Of council member in the city of Oak Park Heights.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess for allow pictures to be taken. If anybody's going to take pictures of Mark.
Yeah, absolutely.
Passport last week.
Oh, nice.
I didn't use the last one.
See, that's why I also booked this. I wanted a sample of my passport.
Session then. Next item is council and staff reports. I don't think I have anything to report this week. And council member Johnson.
I also don't think I have anything to report besides that the Middle St. Croix Watershed Management Organization will not meet this month.
Council member Littigren.
I have nothing to report either, other than the planning commission will not meet this month either.
Council member Runk.
I noticed that today, the Washington County Board reappointed Oak Park Heights resident Chuck LaRue to the Browns Creek Watershed for another term. In response to the story in the Pioneer Press concerning the Hy-Vee situation, where the mayor Stillwater had commented that he was going to contact the CEO of Kowalski's. I'd been in contact with the CFO, the Chief Financial Officer at Kowalski's, and he assured me that they were happy with the current situation and that they currently signed a new lease so they can stay where they are.
Council member Swenson, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report. I hadn't attended any meetings yet today.
All right. Okay, and then we have staff. City administrator.
Mayor, council, good evening. We have received the brick colors for our new well, well three. We talked about it a little bit in the work session. So as I've spoke with a few of you here today, just need to confer of where we landed at that work session when we picked the colors. But either way, it's going to be a beautiful building here. And again, planning for that construction to take place here and be completed by the summer of '26. That's all I had this evening.
Police chief.
Mayor, council, homecoming week. So the SRO is very busy up there. And then we've got a big carnival that's planned on Friday at 4:30. The school's up at the school. And so we'll be there in force with all of our other public safety partners from Washington County. And then obviously, the football game. So we're gearing up for that. And that's it.
City assistant city administrator and city clerk.
Mayor and council, just one item for you this evening. Your recycling award winner, the first one for the month of September, is Melissa Lust at 5600 Osgood Avenue North. For her recycling efforts, she gets to choose between a fire extinguisher or a smoke detector as a reward.
Thank you. And next is our visitors and public comment.
Mayor Doherty, I just have a question for the police chief about the homecoming. I think residents might be curious. Given the recent situation, how is RPD looking at student safety at the homecoming event?
No problem. So with that current situation, just beefing up as far as extra staffing, there's approximately, we'll have nine to 10 officers at the game, along with five to six at the carnival as far as, you know, extra staff that's going to be on site. So that'll be helpful. School also reimburses us for the staffing. We'll have anywhere from six at most games, five to six. Typically, we have four. So we've increased our staffing a little bit at each game now. And I've been in contact with the sheriff as well. He said if we needed any additional, give them a call on that, too. So that's some of the preventative or some of the additional measures that are being taken along with coordination with the athletic director, Nathan Cox. And so I think we're pretty well staffed up and we should be good. So, thanks.
Yes, sir. I'm Jim Kramer, 5475 Oak Green Place North in Oak Park Heights. Mayor, council members, staff members, several things. First of all, some good news. This will be my last council meeting that I'll be attending at the city of Oak Park Heights, at least as a resident of Oak Park Heights. And I just wanted to let all of you, mayors, council members, and staff, know how much I appreciate the confidence you've shown in me in the years that I've been around in appointing me to various commissions and committees. And I really do appreciate that. And actually, most of all, I, well, I guess not most of all, second, I also appreciate that you always, though we haven't agreed, you've always been very, very willing to listen. And finally, thank you very much for the friendships that I've been able to develop with all of you and getting to know you as individuals, as well as staff members, council members, and the mayor. And for all of that, I thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your service. Alrighty, we will move on to the, yes, sir.
Thanks for naming the play, Greg.
You deserve that.
Okay, we'll go on to the consent agenda. First is approve bills and investments, checks. Seventy-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-six to seventy-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-six. Approve the city council work session notes from August 26th. Approve city council minutes from August 26th. Award the 2025 Fall Ash Tree Removal and Stump Grinning Project Contract to Save-A-Tree, who provided the lowest responsive and responsible bid. Adopt a proclamation for the United Way of Washington County East Week, October 6th through the 12th. Approve appointing the city administration to the Coalition of Utility Cities Working Group. Authorize the city administrator to execute documents associated with Sargent's Union certification and award contract to Millboro Electric for the Kruger and Sixtieth Street light repair.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Council member Johnson.
Yes.
Council member Littigren.
Yes.
Council member Runk.
Yes.
Council member Swenson.
Yes.
And Mayor Doherty.
Yes. I thought, I mean, I didn't get to vote anymore.
So there just being four.
Okay, alrighty. We have no public hearing. We have no old business. We have no new business. Do we have any other council items or announcements?
I guess I'd just like to say one thing, Mr. Mayor. Chief Hanson, I'd really like to compliment you and your department for the incidents that have been happening around here and the way that you have handled it. You know, since you became the chief, you've built a cooperation with all the other departments around. And it's very evident with the things that have happened and the response that you get from neighboring agencies and the professionalism that your staff has shown. So please pass along, thank you to them, and thank you to you.
Very good. All right, then we will go into a closed session.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a brief announcement here on the open session as we do that. So there's two different matters that the council is going to, or our staff is going to present to the council in closed session tonight. The first matter is a personnel-related matter that is going to involve the discussion of non-public health or medical data of an employee in pursuit to the Minnesota statutes, open meeting law, 13D.05 subdivision two, subpart A3. Council is allowed to go into closed session to discuss matters that may relate to someone's private health or medical data. So that will be the first issue that we'll go into closed session to discuss. The second matter involves personnel-related matters that have a relation to labor negotiation strategy and discussions. And again, pursuant to the open meeting law, this one under statutes, 13D.03 subdivision 1B, council is allowed to go into closed session to discuss labor relation, negotiation matters. And so we will go into closed session on those two matters. They'll be recorded as required by law. If there's any official council action that is directed to be taken following those discussions, we will come back out into open session to discuss those things and have official action on them. But just for the councils and the public's awareness, if the council decides that neither of these issues is ready or ripe for any official formal action by the council, we may just adjourn in the closed session, in which case we'll come back at the start of the next meeting and summarize in a general way what discussions happened without any formal action by the council. So with those kind of precursors and descriptions of what we're going to be talking about, I'd request that the council make a motion to go into closed session to discuss both of those items.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Okay, motion carries. We'll go to the closed session.
I shall miss this.
We have such long meetings for you. It's surprising that you can't pass.
Are you going to go to the Amory Town Board?
All right, we will reopen our regular meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as we typically do here, I'll provide a summary of our closed session since we've come back to open session. And I'll take them in reverse order here. So, first of all, the second item that was on the council's agenda, a personnel matter involving labor negotiation strategy under statutes 13D .03 subdivision 1B. Council staff, particularly city administrator, did provide some information to the council during the course of the closed session on that labor negotiation issue and got some input and generalized direction from the council on how to proceed with those labor negotiations, but no official action was taken on that matter. And that matter will be an ongoing negotiation that will come back to the council if and when any formal action gets taken on that matter. As to the first item on the council's agenda, that was a discussion of a personnel matter involving non-public health or medical data, which was closed under statutes 13D .05 subdivision 2A sub-part 3. We did also discuss that matter in closed session in the non-public health and medical aspects of it. And we will now come into open session to actually have some action on that item. The personnel matter at issue in that particular instance was Police Sergeant Lindsay Paradise, who has been on a long-term FMLA medical leave from her employment at the city for an extended period of time. There has been some discussion about releasing her from employment and engaging in a severance package with her in relation to the end of her employment. And that was some of what was also discussed in this closed session in relation to her health and medical issues. Out of that discussion has come that there's been a severance offer made to her through city administration in terms of some general parameters. And in fact, Sergeant Paradise seems to indicate and has indicated to the city that those parameters would be acceptable to her to resolve the end of her employment. And so, those parameters that have been discussed between city administration as well as Ms. Paradise are generally agreeable. We're discussing with the council and the council was in agreement that you all are on board with that as well. And so, the motion that I would suggest tonight is that the council is willing to accept the cessation of Officer Lindsay Paradise's employment and to engage in a severance package with her, the end of her employment, under the parameters that the city administrator discussed with you tonight, with the understanding that those were just kind of a generalized bullet point of key terms, but you're authorizing your city administrator to engage in the actual completion of a written agreement for that severance and giving him the authority to kind of work through, he and my office to work together, and our labor employment attorney, Lyda Bannick, to work through those finalized terms and engage in a finalized agreement on the parameters that were discussed in closed session.
Okay. We need to make a motion that we accept the guidelines that city attorney has pointed out.
Second.
Okay, it's been a roll call or just?
Uh, roll call would be good.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Littlejergren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson.
Yes.
Mayor Doherty. Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Is there any other business? I'm taking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We are adjourned. Thank you all. And welcome, Mark.
Well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, welcome aboard.